Call the meeting order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes of the previous meeting. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections to them? None, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Bills. There's additional bills that I have. It looks like there's another one here. The motion is second to approve the bills. Further discussion on that, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lisa, aye.
Both?
Aye.
For?
Aye.
Like?
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anything crazy? I didn't see anything, but looks like it's good. Okay. Your motion approved, you have any questions?
Move the board.
Is that right?
Your motion is second to approve the financial reports. Further discussion, questions we can add? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks.
Move the board.
Aye. That's one. That's right. Okay, we have motion and second to approve treasurer's checks. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. She carries. Agenda, anything to add? We're not voting. Sorry, I got caught in a trap. Caught in a trap, you don't do it, yeah. Nothing to add to the agenda, I didn't accept your motion, except you asked to add it.
Move the board.
Aye.
We have motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. Okay. From there, we will jump into budget. Budget, budget, budget. First up is, good morning.
Good morning. Uh, see, I did the budgets for the recorder's office. I added a little bit. Excuse me, I have to sort this out. I add a little bit onto the service agreements just because our increases in between Tyler and UV. Stores, all of our microcavations stuff, they are going up a little bit. Most of the other stuff stayed the same. I did ask for some money to actually try to continue doing the indexing for the next year. As you know, we did it with Katie this last year on a per document fee. That was thirty five cents. She would be interested in continuing doing it, but she won't do it per document because it takes her a lot longer than she figured. Now, if we're gonna continue with her, she'd like a fee per hour, eighteen dollars per hour.
Starting again on that one, though?
Okay.
But we had an agreement.
Yep, we had an agreement that the contract ends the end of December. It was thirty five cents per document, which was extremely cheap. I did go and quote from US Imaging. If they did it, they're pretty much the ones that most others do it. It's a dollar twenty five a document. Katie now has figured out that that's really cheap. If she's gonna continue to do it, we want her to continue to do it in two thousand twenty three. She would like eighteen dollars an hour. She's averaging eighty five to a hundred hours a month. So it'd be eighteen hundred dollars a month.
Probably does.
This is laughable. I thought we had an agreement. Do we have a written agreement?
Well, we do. This one goes till the end of December.
And she won't have it done?
She will. But there is hundreds of thousands of documents in our office.
She's back to what year?
Um, right now, she is done eleven years. We are complete from nineteen sixty eight to current. So we gotta go back to eighteen eighty two. That's when our documents started.
Well, yeah, I'm back to your college.
Yeah.
Could we, I'd rather do it per document than, uh...
We should address this as a special deal in our commission meeting, not during our budget.
During our budget.
What do you think, Cap? Which is the order?
What line item is that under?
That'd be under endorant. I've been paying it out of our endorant fund.
On the endorant, okay.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, okay. Well, I mean, for budgeting purposes, you could just leave the number in there and then we can figure out exactly how we're going to handle it, I suppose, when it's... The contract's up for when we have to negotiate with Katie or open it up for bids or how we would like to do it.
Be better probably for your budget that way anyway.
Right.
That way it won't come out of your budget, it'll come out of the...
We set aside and run it as a special project.
Okay.
Is the state holding over us to do this?
No, it's not. It is, the biggest thing is trying to get everything into the computer system in the time they matter because if something would happen to our books, we have no record.
So how far back are we trying to go to?
Um, if Katie keeps up the pace that she's at, we'll be back into the middle to late nineteen fifties by the end of the contract.
Of this current contract?
This current contract.
So she's gonna have like seventy years done in a year, that's pretty good.
Pardon me?
She'll have like seventy years done in a year, that's pretty good.
It's gonna be, well, it'll be probably about twenty or twenty, I think we calculated.
Well, it was sixty eight to the fifties. We had sixty eight up in, that's correct, okay, okay.
But when I checked with USImaging, that's the one that most of the recorders use. Right now, they're at a dollar twenty five per document. You know? If I, if we would've had them do the indexing from January first to current, just these six months, it would've cost us twenty eight thousand five hundred sixty seven dollars from USImaging. From Katie, it's cost us just a little over eight thousand.
So that my question before, how far back do we kind of go in nineteen hundred, eighteen?
I would say as far back as we can go, we can afford. Yeah, remember, our whole documents were from eighteen eighty two to current.
Okay, so eighteen eighty two would be how far we would go to complete it?
To complete it, yes.
So this is gonna be an ongoing project for years, basically. It's just a matter of chipping away at it, kinda like we did with the scanning of the documents. You build the endorant account, you chip away at it, just keep rolling until you get it done, but it's gonna take a while.
The only reason I ask that, are we better off, maybe later on to discuss it, or are we better off to have a contract just to go all the way back to that, have a five-year contract with it to complete?
Let's do it, that can do two and a tie.
You know what I'm saying, so it's...
We don't have to keep, we don't have to keep coming up with this.
Yeah. Yeah, USImaging would do less, less fee, but it's less information they're gonna put into there, so we'd still have to go back and include information that they would leave off. Like it said in that thing, they can leave off the legal descriptions. That's how we search, we need the legal descriptions on that. You know, you could save sixty cents, but you're not really accomplishing much, my view.
Okay. Any other questions pertaining to this to the budget for that? Hearing none.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Lisa gets to be next. The range, uh, I'll announce pink five and...
Five and then, um, my... Um, five is the treasurer's budget. I don't know, do you have any questions? It's pretty much the same. Technology, of course, why not? Because we get a quote from Steve, and that is why not, but that's with everybody. So I don't know if you have any questions on that one. And then going down to the superintendent of schools, I did go up in miscellaneous because we've been giving the school a joint, with joint duties with them as far as the math count and the spelling bee. And we've been giving them a thousand dollars a year. And we have not, I mean, that's been since Beth Schmidt left and Dr. Matt Bocky, and he was wondering if we could, you know, spice the pot a little bit to hang on to the spelling bee, have somebody... We had a gal from the middle school do it last year, and she did a wonderful job, so I did increase that. So we were gonna go up to two thousand and there. So we might give the school the two thousand. Any questions?
The only question I would have, is there any, obviously, it's like looking at a crystal ball, but is there any anticipation that we're gonna have any...
Annexations.
Meetings, issues of that nature? And is that, is that something that causes the budget to have to need more money? And do you have publications and meetings and things of that nature?
Exactly, and you know, there is a, out of Williston, or whatever Williston, Williams? Williams County's there is individual that will come up and do an annexation because it's a lot of legal work, which I would need both for that. There's a lot of things announced for all of that, and you gotta know what you're doing with, it's costly. Whether it's an annexation, reorganization, or...
I don't think there'll be grabs of county for a while, that's my guess.
You know, but I don't know. You've got two hanging out there, but...
I heard other ones.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
I haven't heard anything, so I'm assuming they're going off for next year.
Hopefully they do.
Okay, well, that'd be good.
That's further ahead.
Be good.
Okay. Any other questions for Lisa then?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Lisa.
That's cool under miscellaneous.
Oh, we paid, yeah, we paid all the miscellaneous, yes.
Okay, very good.
And it is a lot of work, I, you know, one teacher, one meet with her.
Couple thousand dollars around math counts and the spelling bee, see if...
Um, the spelling bee was a hit this last year, it was a little, yeah.
We have, how many kids did we have participate? It was quite a few.
Oh, it was quite a few. There had to be at least forty that did the, because there's so many of each grade and so many of each school. And Starkville game, and Edmore was there, and St. Joe's, and Douglas Lake.
I'm all behind the spelling bee.
Yes.
Even though I lost it every year, I'm all behind. Thank you, all right, thanks.
Beth.
Beth.
Good morning. I just updated the salaries as provided, and then I rounded our technology as that number seems up to eighty each year. That's the service contracts that Steve gives us the increases or decreases for. I also updated our service contracts. Our software and the software that is shared paying for with the recorder's office have both increased a little bit, so just rounded that number off also. And that is all that I updated in the budget.
And one thing I wanna mention is that Beth has talked to myself and Candy about a upgrade for a vehicle. We didn't put it in the budget because we thought we maybe wanna be able to take that out of COVID dollars. I think I would be a lot more comfortable sending Beth and Christie out doing assessing a more reliable vehicle than what we currently have. And Beth says she doesn't need new. We appreciate that, but something we, I think we wanna make the commission aware of that anyone that they have is old, it's worn out, and it's unreliable. One of the things that they require would be four-wheel drive and something with some ground clearance. You know, four-wheel drive Dodge Chargers work, but something with higher ground clearance. We all have driven some of those areas in our county that four-wheel drive is not a watchroom, but I need.
It's a two thousand age trailblazer that we have now, and it just went over a hundred and one thousand miles on it. So that's where I thought I'd start the conversation possibly for the future. I did get a quote on what's trade in value from Lake Chevrolet, and it's three thousand six hundred dollars. So...
We need to sell it? Yes.
That was a little...
Yeah, we're getting the skirt for the last outbreak.
So we'll work that in somewhere.
Yep. Other than that, that was all I had for the budget was those few little things.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Beth? Thank you, Beth, appreciate it. Lance is gonna sell the trailblazer for it, isn't he? Brian, good morning.
Good morning. Pretty simple budget, I think. Wages are as were presented on last commission meeting. IT service fee went up a little bit, and I did just drop the training down a little bit. What's any question for you, so much in your upper year?
Refreshing memory, Brian, but part of this is paid by social service too, right?
Candy can elaborate, but the salary? Oh, it isn't.
Really?
And I think that's what we talked about, yeah. Which one is?
Yeah, one of your sources.
Uh-uh.
I was, I was under the assumption it was almost like a fifty-fifty.
Me too.
Well, it's a direct versus indirect cost. So this is, they consider this a direct cost, correct?
Is that what they consider it? We don't get our two cents? Are we already in the states getting drilled for this?
Yes.
Yep.
True statement.
So maybe we should just...
I don't disagree.
Keep track of the hours, you know, like how many hours you do general, just for, just for our... So if it does come up and we can get paid for it, we would kinda know.
Before the state take over, though, weren't we putting part of this on social service?
No.
Yeah, that was.
Public health is contracted with us, with Brian Services for...
So they pay part of that?
Yeah, they pay a little bit.
It's very minimal, yeah.
Like...
Very minimal. I think if we charge twenty-five bucks an hour, I might, some months I don't even...
You don't do much work?
No. It's...
Yeah, maybe, maybe a thousand, couple thousand bucks a year.
I don't even owe it that much, yeah.
Must've talked about it, but we're, we have the doors locked in our data, so...
Well, I think the big change is what's going from part-time employee to a full-time.
Well, that's the cost we had to eat because, I mean, you have, with the more employee, I mean, we're up to, what, a hundred and... With social services, like a hundred and twenty or something like that. I mean, we have to have a full-time HR, we have to constantly hiring and firing and...
Would you have a rough idea of what work you do for the social service?
They're definitely fifty percent.
Yeah.
They have the turnover.
Yep.
Yeah, their turnover. Discipline, yeah.
Yeah.
Ron and I are...
Yes, we're constantly hiring because you're always training somebody, getting them up to stuff, and then they're going someplace else, and you're hiring somebody.
Yeah, they have a lot of turnover.
Something to put on the, maybe we should make some noiseless.
That is interesting.
Well, we got it.
Okay, any questions for Brian?
Brian, do you have any updates from that HR market salary survey?
Yep, so we had a call with them yesterday. We, or they extended the data collection time during audit period. A lot of the auditors are the ones that submit that information, so they had, you know, they were busy. So the end of this week will be the deadline, and then we'll really start seeing some meat and potatoes stuff from them starting next week with the data they're collecting. We are a little disappointed with the response from the other counties. They reached out to twenty entities, one including the city, one of them was the city. And as of last week, end of last week, or as of yesterday, nine of them responded. But there was another four or five that said they were gonna complete their survey and get it to them this week, so... Which are pretty good, they were pretty happy with, they'd be happy with that, that much data, so... So hopefully we'll start hearing more from them in the coming weeks, so...
We'll be sure of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Hey, Brian?
Thanks.
Here, Nelson?
Morning.
Right up there. What do we got?
What? We pretty much went with the recommended salary issues. Of course, with the one change of adding one new employee, which Candy and I were still discussing where we're gonna put that as far as what's in my budget. We increased our fuel line, our vehicle expense budget. My one concern is I don't know if it went high up, but I don't know what's, you know, as far as gas prices is gonna be the big deciding factor there. Other than that, everything pretty much stayed the same. We were running about seventy percent, so seventy to eighty percent. We were the... It should be good enough for your connection, well, we've had very seldom increase.
Drug, drug gas force, you got that crossed out?
Yeah, that's...
Um, that's the zero, there was two line items in there, and there's, there's another one further back that we barely got moved into.
Okay.
For some reason, there was two created, so we just eliminated the one, because we only do the one payment.
We're gonna hold the same number of people that are too bad now. Same amount of people who're bad on the drug gas force.
Yes, yeah, that's staying the same for now. The rest of the counties still haven't decided to wanna go higher, so... And this kinda depends on their, their input, if they wanna add more funding to take over that next position. If we add one. Because we've got one and a half, the city has one, and then the other counties have the other half. So we would take over the half that we have one, and so we had two fold, but they'd have to pick up the other fold in person, and they aren't ready to do that yet, so... Because we haven't asked this year, we asked last year, we haven't asked again, but... You got it, sir?
Should we ask?
That's up to them, the county county about it, you know.
We should ask them, though, right?
It was pretty evident, they weren't gonna wanna do it last time, so we haven't even thought about it this year.
I got an idea, Nelson's changed their mind.
Okay. Well, from what I've heard from Travis is that there's a couple that are thinking about not even funding theirs part again, so... I don't know where, I can talk to them, I can get back to them by next week, and then see if we wanna try to push that.
Probably not.
Because that's still before the headline, right?
Probably don't have any drugs in that county.
No drugs, no drugs.
Like, so we have, we re-broke this hard, we pushed this hard last year, and they didn't wanna go, so we haven't even talked about it, so honestly...
The same problem is it's always been, they know that the trades are happening here, so why is it their problem? That's pretty short-sighted, I guess, in my mind, but they know we're gonna take care of it, so...
I think we should ask you, Candy.
Okay.
It hurts pretty much the minds. So just for my curiosity, question for Candy, these actual numbers are due six months, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Clarity sake.
Yep. I waited till the end of June to run everything, so...
Okay. Okay, any questions for Steve?
And for radios? Well, between this year and next year, it should be.
Okay.
We're still waiting a little bit for our...
I'm about halfway through, well, if we get the ones that... I ordered them last December.
Yep.
My answer is they might come in a month, they might come in a year. So we're still waiting on new radios coming, so...
Till mid, same thing.
So we're still waiting on the new, the ones we did order, so I should probably order a couple more, so they're here by next year, but...
Yeah.
After the two we just, that are on order, we would, my fleet would be half done. I have four done, I need four, five more. So just about half done if we, but I, I'm thinking I should just order the new ones and get them on the way because I don't know when they're gonna show up.
Right.
The problem with that is they might show up this December.
Yeah.
You know, and now we gotta hold for, we got an issue if we... Because for two portables and two mobile radio, the car radios, it's about, last year, it was about twenty-six grand.
Yep.
And then we get fifteen hundred back from the state for each one, so that'd be a six grand back. So it'd be roughly a twenty-one for a set of two, you know, a mobile portable for each guy, each car.
It's twenty thousand per deputy, basically, then, to set a vehicle and set them up first, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Hour box.
Yeah, our cost.
Our cost, that's kinda mandated by CIRE twenty twenty. And their, their offer is a fifteen hundred.
But they gave us that big fifteen hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Good job.
And here's the dilemma, that why I'm not ordering so many is because they're changing so fast. Now they're coming up with a whole new radio, and they're saying, hey, why do we need to go? We got burnt the last time we did this with the P twenty-fives.
Yep.
We, they said, order, 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 so we ordered all of them and got them all, and that was when the feds paid for them. And then two years later, oh, those don't work, gotta order these. So we had to order again. And it was still at the feds' cost at that time, but it's just like, now that we're spending company money, I'm a little more gun-shotty of spending something and then not having, you know, it be suitable because something changed. Right now, we're buying the top of the line radio they have because that's what we act to buy. We have to have dual layouts because we are being scheduled to be hooked into CIRE twenty twenty until twenty twenty-four. And that's kinda why we're taking it a little slower. And a lot of the other counties are thinking the same way, you know, like Faribault and they bought all their... But they're already switched into that system, and they're already running it, while we aren't even scheduled to be looked at until twenty twenty-four.
So the biggest concern is making sure that these radios work with that.
Absolutely. That's the biggest concern. Is the technology changing, are they changing something that, you know? I feel fairly, I feel fairly confident we got what we need right now. But a lot of the other companies are planning the lower-grade units. The way things change, I don't, I don't think anything's gonna change, but...
So with these, these radios, Steve, if there was to be updates, are they updateable?
Yes, and that's kind of the big cost, is because they're getting them, they can actually update them through the radio system.
Right. Just so that we're not buying something that can't be updated.
Exactly, and you have to, you have to actually upgrade it through the radio system themselves so you don't have to take it to a radio shop to have it, uh...
So that cost is probably less.
Well, it's a cost per unit, yeah.
But it's probably less than sending it all in and all that.
Well, basically, you gotta drive your car to the radio shop, and wherever that is for you. Like, Stone's has a shop here, so a lot of times we can get it done here, but if we didn't, it would be Grand Forks, so we'd have to drive the car, every car to Grand Forks. You know, some of these other companies that don't have it, that's our choice, wherever we go. And there's encryption involved, there's all this, you know, all the other things that everybody wanted, so of course that has cost.
I think we need to get into the radio business. Sounds like a pretty good, pretty good...
Somebody's got the work to cover pretty well.
Yeah, it's just... I understand there's costs associated with, you know, development and obviously the physical unit, but twenty thousand bucks seems like, that's a lot.
For two portables and two car radios.
Yeah, that's an insane amount of money for, I mean, yeah.
You gotta talk.
Yeah, we don't have, I mean, and they know we don't have a choice, so...
And we, and here's the deal, if we don't go to that system, and we don't believe to say we're not gonna do it, we're gonna be on a little island in the state with no communication.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we have to, I mean, we don't have a choice, so...
Yeah, we got, we got all these phones, we gotta, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, just where they want us.
Yeah, they will tell us.
So.
Well, as long as you think we got enough in there, I mean.
Well.
And, and we've got, you know, if something were to happen.
Even if I order two more, I might, I might just do that, I might just order another set today, or, or this week, uh, and if they show up before the end of the year, I still have enough in there to cover that as well.
I was gonna say, we got COVID dollars still sitting there too, if we had to go.
But I still have enough built in there that we have enough to cover in my budget besides.
Yeah.
And if we want to use COVID dollars, great, because that just goes back, saves our money, but, you know. Because even if we don't have that available, I still have it covered.
Hopefully, once we're changed over, we don't have to, hopefully, everything works.
I hope.
I hope.
South Dakota built this whole system years ago with the same, and it failed miserably, and they have to start over again. And, you know, and so now we're, now they're modeling after Montana and South Dakota and Minnesota. Evidently, on the east side of the state, like Fargo, theirs is working well with Minnesota's. So they aren't having any issues, so it seems to be working okay, both in Grand Forks and Fargo, so far. So.
Okay. Further questions for Steve? Okay.
Thank you.
Suzie's not here yet, she's at nine fifteen, so we'll move on to Jeff. What'd you say? She's on the radio station, oh, okay, okay, well, we've got other things to do.
Drug boards question didn't change from last year. Um, including now the same amounts for all my counties.
Is there any discussion at the basin board about, uh, updating the letter?
We did the, we updated the light art project, um, with the international water institute, we did, needed to do with that agreement on that. And, and what that is, is really a cool, uh, computer program that they've taken all this, uh, light art data, the new light art data that was from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, um, that timeframe that was, and then they're putting it back into their hydrology, um, methodologies to create wet watersheds and, um, wetland delineations and hydrocrafting. So we can take a, a road crossing and again, come up with a watershed for that particular road crossing, and it'll give us the numbers that we need to have for culvert sizes. And that's a basin-wide deal that their, their international water institute has done. And, uh, they need some extra money to make that, um, available and continue their work, yeah, doing it, and so that's something that the joint board contributed to. Out of the ways that we feel that we can get back to all our counties. And, uh, it's available to anybody, you don't need a user or a password or anything like that, uh, just a matter of a few clicks of a mouse, and Paul uses that, uh, quite a bit, and I use it on a regular basis, looking at various watersheds and stream crossing standards and different things like that, so really a useful tool. But, and the data collection that we're getting, uh, from the Endon sites that we put up in the basin, I think we've got four of them, five of them that we've personally, uh, done through the joint board, and there, I think there's another five within the basin. But the amount of data that they're collecting is extremely beneficial. And there is a grant that, uh, UMD was able to get that's gonna do all season precipitation monitoring on some of those Endon stations. And we're getting a couple of those on our far northern section of our, our basin up in the quiet Rawa area, um, and, uh, right on the headwaters, some of our major coolies. So we can get not only rain, uh, precipitation amounts, but, uh, snow water equivalent, uh, measurements. And, and that's the big thing that we're missing, you know, everybody has a rain gauge on their farm, and you get a lot of that data. And what we're not getting is water equivalency in the snowfall. And so these new, this new technology is gonna really help with that. And hopefully, we can have a better understanding of, of why we see about seven hundred thousand acre feet of rainfall on a, on a year and some years, we see a hundred thousand acre feet of rainfall on our way. So. But, yeah, we're gonna do that without the same budget that we asked for last year.
Okay. Questions for Jeff? Okay, there are nothing, sure. Okay, hopefully for Suzie, so we'll move on to Candy.
All right, we do the agenda first, that's Paul's, this is yours, yep.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right. We'll start with the road updates, um. We got, they got done chimp seal, our chimp seal project yesterday, so that is done. And they also started, Paul was working on the paving project up at Hampden. They did start paving. A couple days ago, ran through the forest, um, they got, oh, yeah, they're done. So maybe Paul's got some stuff to fill you in on the, on the Hampden project.
Yeah, they got, uh, I think two and a half miles, eight miles done the first day, um, they had a short day that day, about yesterday, I would say six and a half done, so they might actually finish eight miles tomorrow. If everything goes well, but they need to get some rain and it, they need to turn the tack ground again, so they have to wait for that to dry out before they can keep paving, so, I don't know, it might be Saturday, it might be Monday. And they're working on the concrete stuff in town. They make a bunch of changes there, but it'll, it'll work. And then, um, do, do this, or?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of change orders, the first one wasn't no dollar one, right, it was just a change of wording on a spec, went from, uh.
Four percent air waste to three.
Yeah.
On that, and on that, so that lets you get a little bit more oil in the mix, which is good for low volume pavements. And the spec, new standard spec for the DFT change between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two.
So that first one was basically a no dollar change order. The second change order is one that's about a pound, right?
Yeah.
And it's a little metal cover, so maybe you can whip it up.
So we had, and there's three manholes, um, within the pavement up in Hampden. And one of them's pretty low, the other ones are flush with the pavement, but we have to raise them up to match the new pavement overlay, um. We're gonna dig them out and put in chimney seals around them, but they're not really, there's no settlement around them, and they're not frost jacked up, like some of the ones we see in town here, um. They don't really need to do the chimney seal, I guess the contractor asked if they could just put riser rings on top of them, but well, the map, the cover will set them, and that's the new pavement, and they'll do that at a price reduction, so they don't have to do any digging and patching. So they're gonna, the original bid price is seventeen hundred each, and they said they'd do the rings for five hundred each, so saving thirty-six hundred dollars between three. And makes it a lot easier for them, so. And then they average down the bid price for those that, I have, is nine hundred dollars, and they're gonna do it for five, so.
So that change order is basically saving us money.
Yeah, so we're saving money.
Yeah.
That's the best change order I've ever heard.
Right.
Doesn't happen often.
Well, we're trying to get, kick me up the speed on that change order, so you know.
That, that's not gonna affect, like you said, since there's no frost ease, there's nothing worth digging at all, so it's gonna be okay to do it that way.
Yeah, I think so, that, that would go, I haven't, I haven't been up there in the winter for a long time, but they, you normally see some deformation in the asphalt around it, if that, if that's happening, then I don't.
There's three manholes, Main Street and Hampden.
Yeah, they're all in the block, let's see, on the approach, that'll go north, um, west of the post office, and then one in the, in the middle of that block, and then one on the next approach to the north.
Okay.
For sanitary sewer.
It is sewer, they gotta say.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
It's moving to the southeast a little bit.
Oh, they never guessed it.
Yeah. I mean, it's in the right part of towns, you never smell it or anything, either.
They should have been kind to put it to the northwest, then we know they have it.
Need a motion to approve that change order?
Yeah, may as well, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to approve the change order on county three inlet overlay project. Further discussion. You're none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side?
Most cares, everything's working all right past the station, and?
Yeah, maybe Josh, he had a conversation with Josh, so he's, he's, he'll be in a play.
Yeah, he was five months with us, who knows in the plans, um, but he didn't pay for it.
Yeah, so basically, he's still not helping, but it's gonna look funny if we don't do it, so we're gonna leave it. It's already in the plans to do it, they bid it that way and everything, so we're just gonna do it, end up made for us. It's about, originally, we asked them for about four thousand dollars. It's about an eight thousand dollar project, or roughly nine thousand, either nine thousand improvement.
And the only thing they asked is that we not mill the slab in front of their garage doors, because they jack up tractors and stuff on that, they didn't have any asphalt on top of the concrete, which they get that, so we'll have a mill around that, and then, but they said we could mill through the islands, I talked to the people inside too.
So Josh was a very stressed person with his, that's his personality, I guess. But, um, anyway, it's getting done now, so it'll look like it was meant to be that way, so something we forgot to do.
And he didn't tell me that he pays taxes on that, so. He made sure of that, you know that.
They must appreciate the road, you know, I'm doing, I'm freaking out. I'm excited to do that.
Yep.
Um, gosh, I was gonna have to talk about all those, I don't think, but. Uh, next week, we're gonna start doing our soft spots, bringing up our soft spots on those. Of course, I'm still working on FEMA projects, we still do not have a FEMA damage in the townships. We still do not have a declaration, but we're getting closer, it's on, uh, the president's desk now.
But the same declaration for the ER and FEMA?
Uh, ER is different, we'll get that, I'll have a word. I mean, FHWA has to approve it, I shouldn't say that, but there doesn't have to be a FEMA declaration to get the federal aid money.
Okay.
And it helps, of course, but, yeah. It's not an accessory.
That's what this, this, uh, ninety-seven five hundred is? This flood damage.
Nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, that would work.
There's some flood expense for flood damage, ninety-seven five hundred in the budget?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's, that's flood money that we've received.
In the past.
For that year.
About year.
Yeah.
Track.
But it's, those, those years have been closed out with.
With FEMA, so.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, that's crazy, it takes forever to get a private.
We need to show it off.
Yeah, it'll be a decade, it'll be a decade.
Yeah.
It is, yeah. And it's, it's, it's the funds we receive basically for running the program locally, basically, I mean, in a small percentage.
But it's spent money, right? Uh, at all?
No, that's money that's sitting there.
No, that's money, just.
That's our, essentially, our contracting fee.
It's, it was administration, they want to figure us, and they won't.
But we can't release it until they say that we're okay to release it, basically, it just has to sit in the fund.
They don't earmark it for anything either, I mean, you can shut it for just about anything.
What they sell is, we're okay to close.
As soon as they make significant, right.
And we can't invest it.
So it just sits there.
Yeah, so just sit in the account.
The first thing FEMA tells you is when they spend, say, these millions of dollars, you cannot put in a less, uh.
Oh, yeah, that's a no. Not a no.
Yeah, it's quite interesting.
It shouldn't make sense to me, but.
We'll take our dollar.
What years do we still have open? All the way back to like eleven or something, because I think we closed like, you know, eight or.
Um, nine, ten, eleven.
Yeah, I've reclosed one or two years, I think, since I've been out of commission, but there's still plenty open.
Nine, ten, eleven, and thirteen.
So you gotta follow up on that, or they just come up?
No, they sent us a letter, they sent me the letter, it's been, I think it's three years after they closed this after, and then.
I would say there's about four hundred and seventy-six thousand, so, is that what it, I have it on the cash sheet.
That's a lot.
Just pretty much after their audit.
They go a little over by.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And at this point, ten and eleven, or nine, ten, and eleven have been audited, but is everyone just waiting for the closeout on that? Thirteen is, thirteen has been audited too, or done. So we're just waiting for the closeout dates.
Yeah, and they gotta audit all our paperwork and all the township's paperwork and anybody that uses any of the money and.
Yeah.
Gotta, gotta make sure somebody paved their driveway with it or something, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Turns into a.
They scrutinize every invoice.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot.
Okay, so, I think, I don't think I have anything else on road updates. Do you have anything to think of?
Um, with corp engineers asked for some information on our, or clarification on a couple of things, like a month ago on the bridge project, but I haven't heard anything more since then. So hopefully, we get a permit from them soon.
Okay, any questions on road updates? All right.
Suzie's time to do it. Do you, do you need a motion to pay that bill for, uh, K L J that you have listed in your, uh.
I do the agenda update.
Yeah. Eighteen, four hundred and forty dollars and thirty-eight cents?
Yeah.
How do you approve?
I'll second.
We'll get on back to that one, so, okay. Okay, motion is second to approve paying K L J's bill, uh, for the highway three work. Of eighty-four, forty, thirty-eight, further discussion. You're none, we'll call it please.
Brown.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Dece, aye. Brett?
Aye.
Midco.
Aye.
Uh, we got, did get our cutting edges from Butler for his summer use, and that was ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. My motion to pay for that. Over.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay Butler for cutting edges, further discussion. You're none, roll call please.
Brett?
Aye.
Dece, aye. Bulk?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Midco.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, and then Midco is asking to bury a fiber optic cable, I brought it up on the TV screen there. Uh, in Military Road on, uh, south, no, south side of the ditch. You can kind of see where it is there, that's the curb down by Johnny Candle's house, uh, way to the left up in the top corner is Johnny's, Candle's lives. So they're going, they're putting a bore underneath our county's road, right by Johnny's, and then probably just put it in with a trencher, uh, spades, rust away, then dig a service box on each end. And I didn't see a problem with it, but the permit, we need to, our motion to approve the permit.
So nothing's gonna interact with it all here, because they're under borrowing, okay?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, excuse me, in a second to approve Midco, the permit for Midco to, for your fiber optic, and, and right away, Military Road, further discussion. See, none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
Okay, uh, put my estimate for the, for the repair of our washouts on our federal aid system, this includes engineering, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand. So our local match is gonna be, it's a, it's not, they call it an eighty-twenty match, but it's like, we pay nineteen point oh seven percent, so it's a hundred and ninety thousand be our share. That's estimates, for now, just for information, and that'll be in the twenty-three budget, we won't get that done until next year.
So that's assuming that we get a, a declaration and everything approved and everything like that, that's gonna be our out-of-pocket expense to this project.
Yeah, and this is the federal aid stuff, not, not FEMA, does that make sense? What we just talked about, we don't need the FEMA declaration to get this.
So this is gonna be lined up, this is federal aid, so then what happens if the FEMA declaration then happens? Then we receive possibly some more money, but we can't use it as match dollars.
All right, we can.
But we'll have, we'll have to, we can use it someplace else, though.
FEMA will be the repair of the spots that were damaged us.
Oh, okay, so that would just offset some of these dollars that we would receive in otherwise, then?
Uh.
Separate roles.
Oh, okay, we're talking separate, separate washouts then, if we're talking that.
Right, right, right.
So this is on. So this is on the federal aid routes. If we receive those other FEMA dollars, we can use them on the non-federal aid routes then?
Correct, yes, yep, yep. So that's more for information than anything. I did put it in my budget for next year, so.
So even with help, it was really expensive spring in other words.
Yes, I mean, I'm, I'm estimating, we're not there yet, but I'm estimating a million dollars worth of damage in, off the county and the townships to FEMA. This is another million here, so. Yeah, crazy. Okay, and then moving on, we're gonna be renting the skid steer next, starting next week from Ironhide. Uh, it's gonna cost around thirty-two hundred dollars. That's, that's four a month, and if we don't need it for a month, they already reduce that rate, but. So I'd like a motion to go ahead and rent that since it's over two thousand.
So.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to approve renting skid steer from Ironhide for, further discussion. You're none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Most carries.
And one more thing I had to add, uh, need to order some more culverts and go out the door like thirteen thousand dollars at a time. I mean, it's crazy how many culvert. But, uh, my order this time is for twenty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So I need a motion to go ahead and order that.
Twenty-nine thousand much?
Twenty-nine thousand four two seven. A little bit of room.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to have Evan order some more culverts. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries.
And just a heads up for now, I'm not, I won't be at the next meeting, so. Anything comes up. I'll probably have it solved on hand too.
Sandfish.
This is what, do you want to talk about that, or?
Um, I just gave you guys an update on the period of funds. You know, I'm kind of still focusing for forecast, so last one page, but it's, I mean, I don't have the. Revenue down to fifty-three to make it. So it should be a pretty good service at the end of that. Hopefully we can see that, uh, companies coming, what gets filled here, then at the end of the year, they'll start filling, then. First couple of months, it should fill next year.
So what that means is, you know, if everything goes like it is going now, Ramsey County should get one million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That's an estimate, of course, we all know that. That is not oil places.
I think those are, I think those are seven.
Yeah, if the buckets fill.
Or if they, if they fill for a week, yeah.
Yeah. So, and just so you guys know, I did not, that, we're supposed to get that, well, again. Uh, this is what they're telling us. We're supposed to get that, the first part of twenty-three. And I did not include any of that in my budget because last time we did this, you know, we got burned, so.
Yeah.
Just so you know, that's not my budget for twenty-three yet.
So did they release those funds where, I mean, this is for the twenty-one, twenty-three biennium, so.
Yeah.
So does, they, they release those funds immediately when the buckets fill then, or?
I don't remember.
I mean, because the legislature's in session next, but it's usually not until July first is when the, the new fiscal year starts for the biennium, so. They'll, but they'll release that previously if the two bucket fills in that.
I think so.
That's what the NICO had said, uh, and they said the first part of the year, first quarter of the year, so.
They left the NICO there.
Oh, it says the right, okay, initial distribution to cities with population, okay. Minicon will be defined and then the county township fund will be distributed once the bucket's filled, and then, once the bucket's filled completed, then there's remainder, okay, okay.
We've got a report, we got a lot of time.
Yeah, right.
So once this bucket fills up, we get that, we, or some of that. So we, that's the thing, it's, it's nice to get, but you can't, you can't, I mean, oil could fall out of bed overnight. You never know what's gonna happen.
We just save free money.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, that's all. I haven't started my agenda.
Alright, budget then. So we're on page one to three.
Yeah, you guys will have to help me with pages. Is that the.
Who left Blacktop?
So what we're predicting for, or what we're planning on spending money next year on the Blacktop Fund is, uh, design and engineering for the flood projects. Which is two hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred. And just so you're aware, we will have to, uh, solicit for engineering on it once those dollars get approved. So we'll have to go through that process and select an engineer. That's just part of the process. If you want the feds to pay for the engineering. So and then, uh, for the second line, I have the actual construction itself, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred. And then the construction engineering for the bridge on Ramsey Four. I did raise that a little, it's twenty thousand dollars. I don't know if that's gonna change, but. I think it will be good for dollars, is what I predicted for dollars here. The construction on the bridge is gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand. And there'll be some federal dollars with that also.
Oh, Ray, that's just a little, sorry, yeah, that's good.
Then, uh, the, the last one, the design engineering on our next paving project from, which will be done in twenty-four. And that would be from on Ramsey County Three, from state seventeen down to eighth A, along the road to Wester, down to there. And I put in sixty-five thousand for that. I think that's one of them projects we're gonna look at shoulder writing, so. It's gonna be more expensive than what we normally used to. So that ends up being one billion two hundred and eight thousand. Any questions there? Okay, okay, next page is.
County Road.
Salaries, of course, as we went by the list, uh, fixed charges. I raised up a little bit, that's our health insurance and benefits. I raised three thousand dollars a month, that's enough, but. Uh, capital pay is for. Purchase, uh, equipment rental, which is twenty-five thousand, and also for buying culverts and. For stock and for resale, that's a hundred and fifty thousand. Next line is for construction. We have quite a few, uh, gravel projects going next year. So I guess if, if there's a place to reduce this, maybe one of them, I don't know, but something to look at. Uh, Ramsey County Cavalier County Line West Hamden, I predict a hundred and sixty thousand there. Ramsey Eight D, which goes east of Laton, it's thirty-five thousand. Ramsey Seven C, which goes east of Brockett, was forty thousand. Ramsey Seven A, which goes west of Brockett, is a hundred and four thousand. And then the last one is Ramsey County Two, Grand Har- Grand Harbor is five miles west, seven miles north. And then this time we're gonna do the four miles that go back east, which hasn't been gravelled since I've been here. And that is, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand. And then the townships help pay for part of that, like twenty-five percent or something. Uh, the next. Is our groundwater. I raised that up. The price went up considerably this year, so I raised that to fifteen thousand. Repairing soft spots is fifteen thousand, and then our overlay patches with Blacktop is fifty thousand. And then the last one on that is most miscellaneous. And I just put a hundred and fifty thousand in there. We always seem to have a project that comes up here and there. So I'm predicting a hundred and fifty thousand in there for a total of one million eighty-one thousand. Yeah, one million eighty-one thousand eighteen forty-two is pretty. Any questions on that one? Okay. County Road Equipment, we never have. I don't use that for years. County Bridge, we did do our, we didn't move our bridges this summer, so that pretty much just stayed the same as it was last year. I think I did raise it a little bit for the price of culverts. Our bridge inspection, this is our, I don't, twenty-three is our big year for bridge inspection, so I raised that a little bit. So the total there was a hundred and sixteen thousand for bridges. Okay, highway tax, this is the one that will get generated from, uh, gas tax. It's not really a. A little levy type of thing. So this is the salaries for all the other workers that's sitting with our scale we were given. Overtime and summer help is thirty-five thousand. Fixed charges are raised up a little to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Unemployment, which we haven't used, but every once in a while when somebody quits or whatever, they hit us for unemployment. And we haven't had to pay that for years, but I did put it back in the budget. Insurance has gone up a little on our vehicles. So I raised that up a little bit. Travel and training, left out the same. Utilities, our heat and electricity, of course, we all know that's going up, so I raised that up a little bit to sixty-five thousand five hundred. Office supplies, I reduced a little because we're saving a little bit more on advertising now. Gas, oil, and fuel, this is kind of a moving target, but I raised that up considerably, another forty thousand, to a hundred and forty thousand. Supplies and materials, stay the same, a hundred and eighty-three thousand. That includes our gravel, riprock, sand, all that type of stuff. Repairs and maintenance, I left the same, thirty thousand. Capital L, this year I'm putting, I'm putting in for a new paylor. And, uh, skid steer, which we have so many leftovers from this year that we can use and then get a little bit bigger one. So I put four hundred and ninety thousand into there.
That was the same as we talked about before, eh?
Yep, correct, yes. So the total on that budget is two million thirty, thirty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven sixty. Any questions there? And one two times. Alright.
Just a lot of, a lot of big numbers.
I know.
Those are expensive.
Okay, County Road Project, that is our chip seal project. We're doing four B, which would be, uh. I can't be right, it's four C. Anyway, it goes from, uh. Uh, County Seven, Brockett Road, south to US Two. And also that stretch on eight between three and four. So that's for next year. And I put down six hundred and ninety-five thousand. I'll have to change on that two week four C. Any questions there? Okay, then we're to the flood, flood budget, ninety-nine. Five, they're all done, gone. Okay, now the nine, two thousand nine, ten, and eleven, also thirteen, we're gonna close out now. It's just a matter of waiting for that three-year deadline before we can.
So they got them all, they got them all closed out then, it's just a matter of waiting for the.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Actually, we, we could spend that money if we needed to. I mean, they've already told us that we can, it's, it's our money. In the, in the closeout process, they tell us that it's ours, but. So if we need it for emergency or something, I did put it into the budget. It's not like we have to pay any townships or any contractors or anybody else for the work that they've done, so it's our money. The only other one I have is the cemetery. I didn't have a sheet on the cemetery because. Any questions?
Do you foresee any, uh, additional maintenance needed for, uh, churches there now that they're no longer, um, in corporate community?
It wouldn't be a bunch. We probably got five, six streets that are two, three blocks long at the base, so. A half a day of blade, you know, four, five, six times a year, always summerable. I don't know. Yeah, that won't change much.
Won't change much.
Uh, and it's kind of comes out of the labor and the fuel and that, that type of budget.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit of increased fuel cost, but the guy's in the blade regardless, so.
Right, we're gonna get it.
Always. Any other questions for Kevin? Alright, thank you. You're none, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Good luck for them.
Thank you.
Don't forget to come back, yeah.
Okay, Suzie's here. Good morning Suzie.
Good morning. How are you guys today? I, uh, sent Candy over the late access budget for the year. Nothing early has changed, so I really have a whole lot to go over on it. Um, the profit still remains roughly around seventy-one thousand five hundred for the income, I should say. Um, might have to do a little tweaking on that. Um, I estimate that the game of fish can come at thirty-five thousand, but. Uh, we have to, as of last year, start itemizing everything back in our reports to game of fish. Uh, which has been a little tough because we have to break down what's being utilized for fish cleaning stations and what's actually being utilized for the, the landings. And so a lot of the bids are all in one, and so just trying to put the percentages in there as far as what, uh, bill does for, uh. The landings versus the fish cleaning stations. So we'll work on tweaking that a little bit, hopefully bring that back up a little bit more. Um, other than that, uh, we did include fifteen hundred dollars for a yearly beach maintenance, and that's for the Lakewood Beach. We've been helping the park board with that, so, um, trying to maintain some sort of beach area there. Um, unfortunately, this year the work that we've put into the last two years got washed away, um, so we did decide to, uh, keep that into the budget. And hopefully, um, next year, uh, being able to put some sand back in that area to get utilized quite a bit. Uh, and then the other thing we added under expenses was the shore fishing piers, so. Um, after the, uh, fishing piers are in, we realized there's some yearly maintenance with those, um, that we have to, have to do when sometimes there's breakdowns and such. So we added a two thousand dollar, um, item for that. Other than that, everything else has pretty much stayed the same. Under utilities, I guess we did increase, um, right now it's under go for sanitation, but we did, under that utility, um. Increase that just like. increase that just lately because of the fuel costs. So the, the bids came back a little bit higher than what they've been in the past. So other than that, everything else is pretty much the same and I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions for Susan?
We are working through, uh, lake access and game and fish next year. Just so you guys are aware, um, all of the grinders haven't updated to the Barracuda grinders except for Henninger. And so with all the projects going on with game and fish, they asked that we wait until next year. So we'll put in a grant to hopefully get Henninger landing upgraded to the Barracuda grinder. Uh, then they will all be upgraded to that new system, which has been really nice. The breakdowns are minimal, um, with those new grinders, which has been nice. And then we will work towards some more stair projects through game and fish. There's the stairs on Highway fifty-seven. And so we'll look at putting in some grants for those as well. So just so you get some aware of a couple of projects.
Where are the stairs at, like fifty-seven?
Right off the grid.
Well, there are. Okay, I didn't say that.
You already had a chance to prove it, actually.
So it gets stairs right over the rocks to get you right to, I don't know, is there like a landing on the bottom of the fish off or bird?
Yeah.
Sand or?
Last year was even more sand.
Yeah.
This year, but there is still.
Like I said.
It actually gets used quite a bit.
Well, it would have silvered wood, yeah, for people that don't want to go over the rocks, obviously.
Well, I mean, I, I think it was a big hit.
It was.
A lot of people, I, I didn't think it was gonna be used that much, but it actually gets used a lot.
But it's not handicap.
No, unfortunately it's not, but they would have to...
Yeah, we got, we got the fishing pier access for handicapped accessibility, which is...
That's how it was, that's how it was justified, I believe, makes sense, because there was handicapped accessibility.
I want a child that is used a lot.
And they were good addition. Okay, further questions for Suzie? Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Don't think I missed anything here. Alright, on to unfinished business. Standing committees of the NBCCA. Anybody looked at their schedule? The children are, they'd like to be forwarded for appointment.
So how far out does that go, that two-year thing?
Uh, if you're talking the legislative committee, mostly it would be just during the session, I think. Correct, Jeff? The other ones, like the resolutions, all that kind of stuff, it's basically just a yearly committee. So it'll meet before the October conference and then, then their work will be done. So that, the other ones are pretty quick comparatively. I would guess resolutions takes a little bit of time, just because you gotta go through the resolutions process and make sure everything's written correctly, but it's all done by October. But the legislative one is by far the most accurate in terms of, because once you get into session, it'll be a meeting weekly.
And they said, oh, uh, all very candid, all the name for meeting, sent them.
It'll be a weekly meeting. Sometimes if it's something really important, they'll send you an email and say, we gotta jump on and talk real quick, you know, when something comes up. Especially towards the end of the session when stuff's getting horse train is happening, it's going really fast. Just so you can get out the horn with your legislators and get their ear a little bit, but...
That was the one that he wrecked out, I'll put it. As long as I get notified with email.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're, they're really good at words. People that act, you know, they're, they'll keep it. And, and the, the meeting, the weekly meeting is usually a standing time, you know, so it's usually like a Friday and whatever, you know, they'll, they...
Yeah, it's longer than our two-hour notice.
No, 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 no. They'll, the only time that there'll be a short notice thing is like you said, at the end of the session, but they'll always give you time to make sure that you can find it. Yeah, and, and, and we're just forwarding your name too, so if it's not a guarantee, you'll get on it, but it's just... Okay, we need a motion for that, or, okay, so, okay. Okay, we have motion in the second to forward, uh, Mr. Wolf's name for the legislative committee, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Close same sign. Motion carries. Okay, thanks, Glenn. Appreciate that. Okay, any other committees, anybody else wants to be on? Okay. Seeing none, we'll be, okay. Uh, okay. Site authorization, none in the business. Alright, okay, motion in the second to approve the site authorization, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Carries. Special permit? So...
Second.
Motion in the second on the special permit, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Mileage increase. Fuel costs are going up, obviously. It's more than sixty-two and a half, it says.
Sixty-two and a half, yes.
Okay.
Motion for broke.
Aye.
Okay, we have motion in the second to approve the mileage increase effective last week. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Okay, visitors and delegations. Great. Okay. Portfolios. Mr. Desep, what's your opinion?
Oh, I don't have any portfolios. Um, we do have the, um, July ninth, now is the Lake Region Heritage Center, it's the art show, um, my paper here. There's like all kinds of vendors and, um, uh, they're having a parade for their kids. They're supposed to make a, some kind of a, out of old box. They're supposed to make something out of an old box, like a car or something. Um, so that is, I'm looking for my paper. I believe it was from ten to four. Anyway, um, that's it.
Yeah, if you wandered downtown this weekend on Saturday, Marty will fight something into it.
Yeah, hopefully, one or four hours.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah. We were, uh, the jail where we hired, uh, Dan Kraft as the captain, he was there a prior, two years ago, I think, a lot of time he was there. We're happy with that decision and he's gonna start eighteen of this month. We feel like there'll be a lot of supporting to the jail and, and he will answer the random call. And we will fund it. And Law Enforcement Center wanted to be fine with that, so, and complaints. So I think he stepped in the right direction. Looking at...
Wait, the fight was gone now? Yes.
So, uh... Okay. We're gonna get the training done with the COs that we have there. We've got the numbers down, the nineteen, I think, well, it fluctuates a lot in the name. We're making, meeting a guideline the state's setting up for the DUC for developing COs' training within the next month. And he's getting back on board with, kind of, a regular increase.
The training is killing us, right?
Yep, yep. We're short staff, we're still short. Very difficult to hire people. As COs. Have a guy in Newbridge, different place, and nobody even think the pay is sufficient. They, I mean, they think it's sufficient, but it's the victim training, that's the big idea. So the notional hope is flowing forward, so... Washington got out? Jeff, you didn't have it?
And no, I think, uh, I think that kind of sums things up. Um, they continue to look at, uh, training opportunities, whether it's through, uh, other facilities around the state or trying to incorporate something into the peace officers' training here in Lake Region State. Um, would be beneficial. I think we've talked about that in the past. That if there'd be an initial startup cost at Ramsey County, we'd like to try to help out with that. Um, that's where our biggest concern is, is the lack of available training, or the lack of available trained employees for correction officers. And so if we can get something close to home, um, would be the best thing for our facility. And I think bringing Dan Kraft on as, as captain and under Ramsey County's, um, I think that would be a good, could serve in a good direction for the facility and and moving, moving forward and hopefully we can get back to a, either a level two or a level one facility quicker than the ninety-day, uh, initial, you know, they implemented that, that, uh, level three facility on July first. Meaning no longer holding inmates longer than a ninety-six-hour hold, puts a burden on everybody, uh, involved. Court system, um, Mr. Cummings, uh, the judges, um, everybody involved. And then the transportation of those inmates and keeping track of where they're at and where their court days are. Been an issue, but I think yesterday we were down to nineteen, I think it was. I worked right from a hundred a year ago, so...
And the reasoning, reasoning of putting the captain under the county, I, granted the county is catching the bulk of this deal all the time. And I think it's another person that can answer to the county commission, no matter who's sitting here. And, uh, it was a better handle on what's going on in jail and, you know, our responsibility as a county to fund, you know. I, I think it's a step in the right direction there, because then we have direct contact with the government for the person. And Steve thought that was a good move to go that way, and he's been very beneficial in, uh, helping with jail here in the last month or whatever. And I think, I think we're gonna get going in the right direction. I, I really think putting the captain under Ramsey County is gonna be very beneficial for Ramsey County, because we're gonna have first-hand knowledge on the population and what we gotta do and where we gotta move them and where they gotta be, you know. Granted, we have another administrator for the nine-one-one and the reentry. And that's a big idea. The reentry, we can hire people there. If she's fully staffed, uh, you can, you get along pretty well over there. The only problem we have over there is the inability to collect the money from the federal government. What were they behind at the last, maybe a hundred and seventy or something?
Uh, you know, when it was, it wasn't a three-day deadline, it was, you know, six months, a hundred and, a hundred and eighty days.
Are other jails having the same issue as far as getting paid?
Well, they're the only reentry center within the internal part of North Dakota. Rest of them are in Bismarck, Faribault, Grand Forks, Idaho, I think.
The BOP apparently is just, they're notorious for not paying on time. The other thing is that the state on, only pays sixty-eight dollars or something on a ninety-dollar bill, which is crazy to me, I guess.
There were some five-block lows in the reentry. I never was in favor of it, but I think it's very beneficial, like I said, to the internal part of North Dakota, because most of the people that are using the reentry are from this area.
Yeah.
They're not more than probably a hundred miles out, so...
Well, that was the discussion, you know, when I sat in on the last meeting and looking at the dollars, and it's like, well, these, the individuals that are running through the reentry center are coming back to our community anyway, so we're better off giving them the best chance to do well when they come back to the community, rather than just having them, you know. So it, it's worth subsidizing it locally somewhat, but it's something, we have to continue to stay on the state, because it's, you know, we're talking about mental health issues, we're talking about recovery issues, and all of those things tie in, and that's one of the things the governor's just been pounding on, well then, fund it.
Fund it, absolutely.
You know, we, we wanna help, we wanna go in this direction, but you, you gotta, you can't just talk. There's gotta be dollars that follow it. And so...
And Steve has put Dan Kraft in this budget then?
Yes.
He has done that, too.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We find out in candy, we...
Good, okay.
Got everything organized there. For the twenty-three budget, he's in there.
Okay.
I need to stay there. I just really feel that's gonna be a plus for Ramsey County's knowledge and all the jails going and helping for progressing, because it'll be a day-to-day deal.
Versus getting to secondhand.
Secondhand and, and I'm there or not there, and he'll be there to answer. He'll be under Steve, he'll be in his department. He'll be under Steve. And, uh, that's how they do it in recovery. Kind of makes sense to me. And like I said, plus another person to answer to the commission. Because we have a large bill there every year, and it's not been a shrink by any means, I don't believe. We're in the prisoner business, you better get used to it.
Okay, is it on?
Nothing else, sir. She'll be able to do it fine, so that's it.
Yes, that would be, after this question.
I did see that I got some money from...
Finish wash, right?
Really fun, so...
That's it?
Like, just make a motion that all the order accrues?
We could, I suppose. This tech could rather be full-time employee.
Yeah.
Doesn't, I guess...
Get it into our minutes?
Yeah, that we're...
Good idea, Kenny.
Yeah.
But I'd make a motion that we, uh, that we put, uh, the captain of the correction facility under Ramsey County Sheriff's Department.
On second hand.
Okay, the motion in the second. And as you said, the LAC board's been informed and they're okay with how things are going on that, so... Okay, further discussion?
Just have something to...
Reasonable, yeah, because all, yeah, all of all, yeah, we're, all of a sudden, there's money being paid to somebody else, it makes sense that we're, we gotta get that essentially as a position. Okay, well, further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Okay.
And one other thing on the law enforcement center, I will, again, not be able to attend the next regular meeting on the twentieth. So if somebody can fill in for me, I know Adam, I appreciate you doing it last time, uh, work scheduling conflict, uh, getting in the way, but um, we've been meeting on our, on a regular basis here. Um, trying to keep everybody informed of what's going on, uh, and you know, making sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, Mr. Brown's been doing a really good job with keeping everybody up to date and having weekly meetings with that. I think we took this week off because of everybody's scheduling conflicts, but, uh, probably get back to it at a moment.
Yeah, we'll see. I'll take it though if there's a need, we'll call them and, and meet at any, you know, any special ones and, but if there's no need, we'll just carry on, you know.
Like Wednesday, the twentieth would be the regularly scheduled meeting, and I do have a conflict, so I can't be there.
That's eight AM meeting.
Eight AM.
Did you do that, Adam? I don't, Jackie's on vacation.
No, well, I, I should be able to, again, uh, I do have social services at nine, but if I have to miss that, that's, I think, a big example, so, yeah. And I, I don't think we need another motion, we, uh, stand against the alternates, so, yeah, I'll, I'll try, I'll make it work, so...
Great, thank you.
Done, problem. Okay, good to go?
I'm good.
Okay, good to go.
Well, lake access. Ken went over that, basically. The fair board had a few more days, that went well. Rodeo went well, even with the one day of tough weather. They had a team roping event, uh, the third day, that Sunday, that went really well also. They finally... All three events again. Uh, district help, have the old, new administrator, eighteen July, we got a meeting. Um, treasurer's been good, he records. I'll sit down with Ben and I'll have her put together what we, how many documents were done, so we can kind of figure out what it would have cost by the people being so, we're always the same. Um, I'll talk with her and have her, she can put that together, how many documents were actually done, so we can... I'll talk with her and have if she can put that together, how many documents were actually done, so we can figure out, okay, it costs us sixteen. Um, we're back. It's all down.
Do a lot of people go back and look at those real old documents? You know, because when you think about it, we've got all the tax books down and, I mean, it, I don't know. I looked at them in the winter.
I would suggest you put on, put on old for a while.
I just don't know how many people have to go back and search.
That, that's a reasonable question. The only thing I would say is, it's not, it's not, it's, it's off budget, so to speak, with the end run dollars since they're coming in. So as long as there's not a computer or something that has to be bought, you know, we can take certain stuff out of the end run budget, but if it's built up, might as well use it to, I mean, we don't have to go crazy, but just keep chipping away at it.
Do another debt payment.
Yeah, well, it's gonna take that one probably.
I think we sit down and they do a contract. So that we're not every year, now they go, maybe one up, they went up. Let's do a two or three year contract to get this much done. We're gonna be back to this date, and that's what it's gonna be. You know, that's my feelings on it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So that we're not blind sided and all of a sudden we went from thirty-five cents to two dollars a document.
Well, she, she has a list right here. So she's averaging right now three thousand eight hundred and nine documents per month. So.
Yeah, cause we would take that by thirty-five.
Yeah, you'd have to do the math on it and figure it out, but she's got it in her budget, so it's just a matter of figuring out what's a fair dollar figure. If Katie doesn't think it's making sense for her financially, well, then we, maybe we can be somewhere in the middle or not.
Right.
Just something to work on.
Well, is there less documents per year going in earlier years? I mean, if that's property gets split up, it would be more and more.
It seems like the further she goes back, the faster they get put in.
Yeah, I would assume there's gonna be less documentation as we move further back, but.
Yeah.
Who knows?
We almost have an idea how many documents there are, because they're all scanned, right? And they're all have a year on them, so.
Yeah, yeah. All the scanning, I think, has all been accomplished now, it's just a matter of indexing them, so.
Yeah.
So it makes sense to index them, because otherwise the scanning cost was pretty much worthless anyway, but it just takes time to move through it.
As they go back, there's less transfers of property.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. At, at some point you run out of it, it's just somebody got it.
Somebody got it for eighty years.
Yeah.
Right. So the, once you get back, I'd say once you get back to two more decades, I bet you it's fast.
I would assume so. Okay, anything else? No, you said we were done. Sorry, sorry. It sounded like a lot was in my mind. Where's your friend? Sorry.
I, I don't have a whole lot that, that hasn't been covered, you know, Sheriff Nelson was in and, and his department's been, been busy, you know. Uh, search and rescue, uh, that falls under his department, was called out a couple times, uh, within the past month. For assistance on the water and certainly glad that that organization exists within our community and they're available. I would recruit the volunteers that serve those individuals.
That would, the one out there with the crockery across somebody's stomach and a lot of bleeding going on. Luckily they were able to get out there immediately, you know.
Right.
Very beneficial.
Extension, I think, Commissioner Volkit, you know, the achievement days within the past week or two. And onsite, uh, home farm visits, uh, I know they really enjoy doing those and the kids and their parents really enjoy showing off their, their farms and their animals and all those kind of things. And Lindsay's doing a fantastic job, I think. You know, she, you know, I asked her first numbers on the PP acres and she did a really good job trying to track that down, even though it's, you know, not extensions deal, it's an FSA deal. Really what best numbers we can come up with is probably anywhere from ten to twenty-five percent. Uh, depending on which part of the county, you know, the southern part of the county's a little better off than the northern part uh, of the county with some of the PP acres, but, um, I think we're, people really work really hard to try to get every acre they could and have access to, get some seed in the ground, so. Um, I don't think we're gonna have the PP acres that we saw in, in some of the high moisture years that we've had in the past. You know, the thirteen and the elevens and things like that, uh, we had a lot of PP acres in the, in the county. Those particular years. Airport authorities meeting on Monday. They continue to move forward on all their projects that they have going on. And we had to do what we want earlier this spring because of the bids just coming in. And we got out of line with what our budget was for and, uh, so we have some time to put that one off and continue to work on spending all the airport money that the airport received with the expansion of the terminal and fire suppression building and different things like that, that we'll be upgrading with their, so.
All right.
Pretty good.
We did, uh, we're H L there, I was there four days and helped set up and helped take down Lindsay and Sarah, they're there to help. You know, Lindsay was running the tractor the second day and all those, pulling the stakes. She had a meat pie there and all you do it.
I went up and visited Lindsay a couple weeks ago in Cindy and she's getting the full gamut of what, what North Dakota spring can be. Went from, went from a crazy winter to a crazy spring and, yeah, it's just been, she's, she's getting the floor out of it and I think she's, she's swimming pretty well, so. And I think PP thing is gonna be interesting too, because I think we're gonna have less PP than we anticipated, but we're gonna have some abandoned acres too, because there was a lot of canola that went in late and then we got a three, that three inch pound of grain and there's been some stuff around us abandoned too, because it just, we get out of the ground. So it's gonna be kind of interesting to see where those numbers come in from FSA.
And one thing that we should mention, since, um, we're in the budget discussion and, uh, and the ACO committees, um, that employee benefit interim study. I don't know where that's going or what direction they're, they're looking at, but, you know, they were reminding us to, you know, possibly include budget items for taking that on if Andy Currie's, uh, drops, uh, counties back into their own, uh, deal. So, you know, but that was something that was brought up at last legislative session or toward the end and it got food food, but, uh, I know they did put that into an interim study, um.
Any changes impacting county costs will not be implemented before twenty twenty-four?
So we've got a, another year to, to think about, but it should be on everybody's radar that, that could be a possibility within this next legislative session.
Yeah, well, and the interim committee work was specific. They weren't looking at different, it was basically just if we stay this or if we go to this and here's the two.
Yeah.
Here's the financial side or effects of both of those situations, so. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what happens in the next legislative session, because there's, you know, there's gonna have to be a pretty big discussion at that point from the Association of Counties on, do we try to run it or do we just throw it back in the county's laps or how, I mean, it, it, because it's not just us, it's, it's counties, it's cities, it's, you know, there's a lot of different.
Political subdivisions all across the.
I think they said of both the only political subdivisions in the state that wouldn't be affected are the schools, because they're in their own separate structure, so.
It's gonna be a big issue in the session, that's.
And Ramsey County's outstanding dollar figure right now is, what is it, something like thirteen million bucks or something like that? So, I mean, you can't just all of a sudden throw it on top of us. I mean, because we've been expecting how this is gonna work for a long time, so, yeah, it's gonna be an interesting thing to deal with, that's for sure. We're gonna have to work with our legislators on them and really, I think, educate them from our perspective on why we think it's a good idea to keep it going.
We did have with the chamber, um, well, I don't know if it was part of a chamber, but it was a committee, uh, community committee that got together and we took a look at, uh, after that city sales tax, the park, uh, sales tax increase passed. We went toward, uh, the Leaver South building, uh, Leaver's family is gonna be committing that building and that property over to the park for its usage, uh, for some additional recreational type of activities and, uh, you know, there's a, a plethora of ideas that are being thrown out there of what can be done and what people would like to see and what would be beneficial for the quality of life or for the community of citizens in Devil's Lake and Ramsey County. And so, um, I, I think we have a plate full, but, um, you know, I think the big, big plus is that there's a building already there, you know, that they're not looking to, to build over there. A big new facility that.
Yeah, retrofit costs are gonna be a lot more reasonable than trying to build from square one and it's not maybe exactly perfect for everything you wanna do, but you can make it work.
Yep.
And it'll, it'll be a turnkey comparatively, so. And I would assume at some point there's gonna be a possibility of maybe an ARCA dollar asked from us to maybe get involved with it. I don't know what kind of dollar figure, but something to at least keep on our plate. And then the ARCA committee will have multiple things in front of them on options, so. There hasn't been a lot of asks yet. I think we're maybe three or four, something like that.
And I, and I guess with that, then with the election over, I'd ask Commissioner Lighton to work with Mayor Moll and working with the city commission to kind of have a joint city county, uh, sit down and, um, work out some of our, our community projects and our operational efforts and different things like that, that I think it'd be good to, that we all sit across from the table from one another and, uh.
Well, I, I don't disagree. I actually, after former Devils Lake yesterday, spoke with Spencer, you know, the new city administrator, and visited about it and said, you know, once the mayor kind of gets his speed on her, give him a little bit of time, but we should sit down as both entities, uh, and I figured maybe I would start just one-on-one talking with him, because we got a lot of things we gotta hammer out, uh, from LEC to community-wide efforts and things like that. So I think it would be worthwhile at some point. Then we got the new commissioner and, uh,
so.
We'll have some new commissioners here, obviously in November, but it's never, never hurts to keep those communication lines open, so. We'll work on it.
Great, thank you.
Yep, anything else you have? Okay, from my perspective, uh, library board met yesterday, uh, everything seems to be going pretty well there. Uh, the one thing that we, uh, did do two meetings ago, meeting ago, and I forgot to mention is, uh, we decided to go to a no late fee system, because the late fees were so miniscule in terms of what you could collect and all it was, was a barrier for people to come in and check stuff out. It's still gonna be, if the book doesn't come back in the timeframe after a certain amount of days, then it becomes, you can't check anything out anymore. But the late fee structure was, wasn't really working very well, so we decided to do that. I think it's gonna be beneficial. There's actually a lot of different research that we looked at before we made the change. Um, so hopefully that'll work well. Uh, basically the concept is what, you know, if you still have the book, but you had it a couple extra days late, but you can't afford the couple dollars or whatever to pay for it, well, we still want you to be able to read another book. So hopefully that'll help out. Um, we went over a lot of policy language over there, just trying to update stuff. Uh, policies haven't been updated for a while. Um, uh, we got some of the budget stuff back from the city, maybe they're under the city pay scale and stuff, so, uh, they'll be in, what, second meeting in July probably to talk about that. I think it's gonna be, uh, pretty similar to last year's budget, but, uh, we were having a discussion about mills yesterday and stuff and I was trying to holo grain at the same time, so I was kind of confused, but, but I think it's gonna be okay. We'll get, we'll get our hammer out. Uh, law enforcement center, you guys touched on it, I was there last month. Uh, social services, I missed last month. The one thing I did see is, uh, I got an email from, Ron, a while back. Apparently we're, uh, must be not running attended care anymore, is that school correct? Because there have, we've been having staffing problems with it and everything this whole time. It's like anything, trying to get people and, I think there's a long-term discussion that's gonna have to occur, um, not necessarily around attended care, but around all of the different systems in place, foster care, shelter care, uh, you know. We've had that problem here, but other counties especially too, with kids staying in courthouses and, because we, we jumped on the, what was it called? The Families First Act immediately and then that shut down facilities where children had places to go that were safe and things like that. And so it's, it's been kind of a, we haven't had a huge, huge problem with it. We've had problems.
But it's on the horizon.
But it's definitely on the horizon and other counties have had larger problems than we've had with it, so. Uh, it's, it's gonna be something that's gonna be a continual conversation. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be a conversation at the legislature too, because it's, if you think about it, if you've got a kid that comes out of a placement or needs a placement, there's no foster care services to send them to. They've gotta sit in a courthouse. What is it doing to that kid? You know, it, I mean, it's telling them, you know, you're not wanted or there's no place for you to go or, and it, it's just, it's detrimental. So we have to, to get a bit ongoing conversation on that, obviously. Um, uh, North Central Housing, um, things are starting to go pretty well there. We're fully staffed. Um, getting our apartments filled, which is good. Tim is getting his feet under him now to the point where he harped on HUD enough that they said, you know what? Yeah, maybe we should provide training for directors. So they actually provided training for directors. It only took him a year of yelling at him to say, hey, let's have a training session, but he got that done, so he, he said it was very beneficial. Uh, they had a trainer from out of North Carolina or something, but that is specific to section eight as well as, uh, public housing and, uh, that, that's gonna be something that's not necessarily a county thing, but ongoing, um, HUD is pushing towards, at least in our view, uh, after sitting on that board for multiple years now, that they don't want people in the public housing business anymore. They want more of a section eight where they'll just give vouchers and things of that nature, instead of your local entity running apartment buildings. Uh, so the question will be then at that point, if they start to make that move, how do you transition out of those apartment buildings or whatnot? So I, yeah, I think for the near future, it's gonna stay similar to what it is now, but the writing is on the wall, I think, to a point that that's one of the ways that they might get going that way. One thing I will say is, you know, waiting lists and stuff work up to date, which is a positive. I saw a story out of Chicago a while back where they finally had a section eight approval after twenty-nine years or something like that, so. Twenty-nine years to get an approval to get on the section eight to get a voucher. Our waiting list is completely cleaned up. We're up to date on everything. So if anybody knows anybody that needs a place to live, just send them over to Tim, because we've got apartments.
Yeah, Adam, but the law enforcement center, uh, how many of them have you owned?
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if, we've got obviously stipulations on different apartment buildings. You've got family units versus the, uh, the high-rise downtown here. High-rise downtown is meant more for, um, handicap and elderly, but if they're a young professional or something and they're looking for a one-bedroom or something, there's options there. Um, you know, there's income limits and everything, obviously, but, you know, there's, it never hurts to ask and see what we can do. Uh, and, and we're, we were running, I think, at the last meeting at about eighty, eighty-seven percent capacity. So we've got some apartments open, but we had people moving in, so we've been really making the push to try to get people in and during COVID, people just weren't moving. So if you had openings, people just weren't coming in. Now we're starting to see more people interested in moving in, so that's a good thing. Um, for Devils Lake, we met yesterday. Um, uh, Ramsey County's playful, lots of stuff going on, uh, local project work. Um, the Northeast's, that's planning council counties, um, are working on. The state commerce has a grant program where our, our six county region, and I can't tell you the exact six counties, but it's like Benson, Ramsey, Rolet, Cavalier, there's a million dollar pot of money out there for additional COVID response type stuff, but it's not COVID response, it's just like, so the six counties and their economic development people have gotten together and they've kind of come up with a couple different plans they're doing, um, and the state has to approve them. But one of them is, um, uh, mobile, uh, job training development for like high school kids, trying to, you know, show them and specific to our communities. These are jobs that are available in our communities if you wanna stay here. Here's our twenty-twenty program, there's tuition assistance, there's all kinds of things to try to, you know, match kids up with jobs in our communities before they go someplace and don't come back to anything. So that's one of the projects they're working on. Um, and then the other one is a childcare assistance program. So if the state approves that, we'll have some additional dollars for grants for childcare assistance and, uh, fitting up buildings and things of that nature, so that's what he's been working on. A lot of stuff going on there too, so. Um, I don't think I have anything else from in the county.
I got some stuff.
Oh, both got some stuff?
Uh, two things. We had a relatively safe and quiet Fourth of July on the law enforcement side of things, so. Kudos to Sheriff Nelson and his team for keeping that in line. kudos to Sheriff Nelson and his team for keeping that in line, uh, secondly, got some bad news. Our new assistant state's attorney that we had hired backed out, got poached by Grand Forks County, they paid him fifteen thousand more than we did. So we're gonna have to repost and go through that process again, um, that's obviously frustrating, but, uh, can't force him to work here, so. Just letting you all know.
He's a good candidate.
He was. And, uh, you know, he's from Winnipeg originally, so being an hour and a half closer to home was a big deal for him, but we got some good news though, that apparently there's some newer attorneys coming back to the lake region, so hopefully we can get this out and get somebody on board, help it work for a little bit, so. Just thought you all should know.
Since it's already been approved, we don't need to do that again.
I'm just gonna see within that window that you need me.
Yeah, if we continue to have problems at that price point, we might have to. Go ahead and hit the price point. Oh, fine, well, we'll see if we can find somebody that's interested.
I hope so.
Okay. I think, huh, do it too. Nothing crazy going on, election's done?
Election's done.
Yeah, all taken care of, everything worked well, so, thanks to all the election workers, when in that day it worked nice and thoroughly, everything was good. Maybe Candy.
They, it's, like, like I told them, I'm like, it's, it's all their work, like, to make it, to make the day just be so smooth and, you know. They, they enjoy it, they enjoy lunch, they.
They got tacos at Christmas.
Yeah, they do taco party, what are you talking about?
Okay, nothing else really good, any other?
I guess you had announcements on there.
Oh, yes, announcements, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, uh, there's an annual boundary, annual event at the casino here this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, um, so come up and check it out. Have a vote, one brings people out and sure we did that too, but, um, it's good times whether you get on the water or not.
Thank you.
And there's scheduled events on, in, from inside the flyer, the Schultz, you know, daily routine, lots of fun.
Awesome. There we go. Just gonna say that, that's, I knew it was coming up and I knew we were involved, so.
Yeah.
I just almost skipped the announcement.
I think we're, I think we got at least sixty people who are on the water.
Good. Yeah, we're good. Good deal, Chris.
I'll be out there.
Thank you for your service there. I was told by Candy to announce that Lisa's birthday.
It is.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, yeah.
No, it's actually fifty-seven, it's getting closer to retirement.
Are we supposed to sing, are we just supposed to sing?
They give to you, but me not singing.
There you go. Well, happy birthday, Alicia.
Thank you. We had the ice cream trucker yesterday.
Well, you did.
Yeah. And Colin, the day, the, the girl that runs it, and the point back, don't you came back here, I think a lot of people.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lineup out there, so I think she would.
Well, I, that ice cream truck's been all over the place, dude, I think they're doing pretty well, I think, so.
She, she actually like drove through the parking lot and there was a vehicle behind her, like trapped that, trapped her down, like, soft.
Following the ice cream. They're hiring ice cream?
Yeah, I think it's been a good thing. It was real cool, it was.
That's been.
Yeah, it was, it was really good.
Good.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, nothing else? We are here.